Good evening. Should like to call this Fairfield City Council meeting to order this evening. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Bertoni.
Here.
Councilmember Moy. Councilmember Vaccaro.
Here.
Vice Mayor Tim. Mayor Price.
Here. And the invocation this evening will be led by our reliable city councilwoman. Madam Bertoni, please. If you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray. Almighty God and everlasting Father, we thank you for another day. We thank you for your abundance. We thank you for your grace. We thank you for another chance to get it right. Help us, God, be excellent leaders, excellent community members, and work in unity for the betterment of this city. We pray for our national leaders and the disarray in Washington DC right now and all over America as we try to keep our country safe and moving in the right direction. Ask a special blessing and prayer for all of our school students who are now out for summer vacation or on their way to summer vacation. And our educators and our parents and families, keep us safe and happy and healthy and whole. And so, we just thank you for the guidance that you give us day by day to do what it is you would have us do down here on this earth. We pray all these prayers in the name of your son, Jesus Christ, who lives and reigns with you, and the Holy Spirit, one God, now and forever. Amen.
And Councilwoman Moy, would you be kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance
And we'll begin with council reports. Councilwoman Vaccaro, would you like to begin, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, it's always great to see a full house here, everybody, all our citizens. You know, this time of year, I always say the same thing in the public comments, and that is to wish all the graduates out there, congratulations, for graduating from high school, our high schools, our continuation schools, our court schools. And also, really, that everyone remains safe, because in all the celebrations, in all the celebrations out there, you know, sometimes you do hear that things happen. So, I really do hope that all this, all our graduates and our parents, keep them safe, and I hope that they have a great graduation day, and hopefully, it won't rain Thursday or Friday, like they're saying, because I went through that back in '05. It's horrible. So, you don't want to do that. But, anyway, I just want to wish everybody a happy graduation, and that's my, that is my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Bertoni, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mirror my colleagues' comments. Happy summer, everyone. Please be happy and safe. And I just want to remind you all that I have office hours. I'm keeping office hours now from 4:00 to 5:30 on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And so, if you have any concerns whatsoever at all that you'd like to bring to my attention, or you'd just like to bring me a nonfat latte from Starbucks, or, you know, Peet's is my favorite. But, seriously, office hours, fourth floor, City Hall, 4:00 to 5:30 on Tuesdays and Thursdays starting now. So, I hope to be meeting with some of you very soon. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Moy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Today is the 75th anniversary of D-Day, which I'm sure every one of you know, and everybody out there knows, is when the Allies, including the United States of America, the greatest country in the world, landed in Europe. And during that landing, during World War II, we had 10,000 casualties. These men literally risked everything. Many of them were lost on those beaches. And it went on to destroy the Nazis and Hitler. They're called the Greatest Generation for a reason, and we remember them today. And all the people, including the women at home, and the women who also flew and did all kinds of things for the military during this time, ferrying planes, building planes, building all kinds of things. Rosie the Riveter here in Richmond, you can see. It was all hands on deck. And we thank every person who's still alive or losing, not losing, the Greatest Generation is moving on from this earth every day. We never will lose them if we'll continue to remember. Hope we do. My Uncle Tony, whose name is, Uncle Tony Perez's name is on the memorial out here. He gave his life in that war, and had a huge, huge funeral here in Fairfield, and is buried out in the Fairfield-Suson Cemetery. And so, I always want to remember, and I want to remember the women and men who are fighting for us right now. We have 10,000 of them in Afghanistan. And so, don't ever forget why we get to be in here, and I get to bellyache about whatever, and y'all get to, and we get to, you know, go by and get our lattes and visit with the beautiful councilwoman. It's because of those men. It's because of those Allies who got together. And I know we would do the same thing again, but we are in war now, so let's just never, never, don't forget that. We, we are at war. And, you know, I just, it's really in my heart, because my family's a Gold Star family, and I saw what my grandma went through. I never met my uncle. I also wanted to thank the fire department, which has been really, really busy. I think we could have an ugly fire season, but who am I? I'm not a meteorologist or anything. But, we had a lot of rains last year. There's a lot of grass up around. If you see that, or if you have it in your yard or around your area, please take it down. And, you know, if you see it and it's not your property, nicely speak to your neighbor about it, or if you can't, you can call us and we'll see about having it done. So, it's really important. And our firefighters have been all over the place, doing what they need to do, as well as everybody else in this city, trying to keep the water going. Trees this year are exceptionally bad, losing limbs. And we only have one tree crew for the whole city, and so, they are overworked. And there, again, was a lot of water this year, as you know, so those limbs are very heavy. And when the heat comes on the way it does, you'll see them cracking, falling, and it's very dangerous. So, try not to park under those trees. If you have them on your property, you know, take care of them. If they're, if for some reason you can't, we probably can't get to it either. So, just be careful and be very aware. And I think that's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I should like to report very briefly, that the students over at Anna Kyle Elementary School decided in September that some of them were reading far below their grade level, and it became their goal to do a reading revolution. And I was invited along with several city staff members to go over and inspire them a little bit. Well, last week, all of them have reached their goal or exceeded it. So, they're feeling pretty good, and some of them have some purple t-shirts that I would urge those of you who are wearing blue and purple tonight, reach out to a young person this summer, and encourage that student to do some reading during the summer. Really important. Mr. City Manager, your report, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a few items I wanted to quickly run through. First, I would like to introduce a new staff member. City Council has made it a priority that we focus on rebuilding our Human Resources Department, and I am pleased and excited to announce, and I'll have her stand up and wave over in the back there, Allison Picard, our new Human Resources Director, is here and joined us. She comes to us, she's very experienced, comes to us by way of Kings County, Bart, and Contra Costa County. And so, we are very thrilled to have someone of her stature and experience join us and really guide us through this rebuilding process. Couple of other quick comments. I want to save the date, everyone, for June 22nd. I'll announce it again on June 20th. From 6:00 to 8:00 PM, our Fire Station 35 will have a grand opening, so we're excited to have that station open. It already is open, but we're excited to welcome the community there. And then, on July 4th, I want to just make everyone aware and share some additional collateral material. So, as we've done the past couple of years, we've put in place a very proactive outreach campaign around discouraging the use of fireworks. And that has already started now. So, downstairs in City Hall Lobby, we have our, our display is set up, really promoting where the community should go to enjoy fireworks. We're going to be displaying this as well on the billboards along Interstate 80. We're going to be pushing information out through a variety of social media channels. We'll be leveraging the Police Department's social media channels, City Hall media channels. And new to our outreach efforts this year, and I'll hand out to each one of you, Council, is yard signs that we had prepared to really help continue and promote and push the message of, leave it to the pros, attend certain events for fireworks, but do not use fireworks in your neighborhood. They are absolutely illegal. And so, we will be doing everything we can to enforce that throughout the community on July 4th. Thank you very much.
Were there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there are. So, we have to pull item number, ask you to remove item number two. We cannot make the appointment to the Housing Authority this evening. And that is it. Thank you.
And we met in closed session?
Yes, I have one closed session report, and there was a dispute with Mr. Ron Wasland regarding a, the amount of development fees that would apply to his mixed-use project. And there has been agreement reached as to the methodology to be applied, and that should work out to approximately $225,000 of development fees that will be paid to the city, and that resolves the question about how many, how much fees should be paid for this project.
Thank you.
I should add, it was a 3-0 vote approving that settlement.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, you do not have a report, so we'll go to presentations. And if you would, Madam Clerk, please.
Item A, Public Homeless Education Campaign, A Hand Up, Not a Hand Out.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm really, I'm not going to be talking about shopping carts tonight.
Yay!
Yay! Really excited to be here and talk about our public education campaign. As you recall, as part of our homeless strategy that you adopted, one of those components is to prepare and implement a public education campaign around homelessness. So, really excited about this. We formed a work group. It's a, really a diverse, multidisciplinary group, and made up of business owners and business leaders, nonprofits, service providers, service agencies, and also our church pastors, and so, and also our law enforcement. So, I do want to acknowledge, we do have several of our committee members here this evening, and I want to acknowledge them. We have, at the far left, is that left? We have Kitra Welling from Community Action North Bay. We have Anthony Russo, who is a community advocate, business owner, business property manager. We have Debbie Tavy, CEO of the Fairfield-Suson Chamber of Commerce. Our very own Sergeant Jeff, excuse me, Jeff Osgood. And then, we have Debbie Davis from our nonprofit sector. And then, we have Pastor Michael Wirth from The Edge Church. Oh, Dan, come down here. And then, we have Dan, Dan Blake, who is hiding up on the stairs, and he is from Tri-City Elks. So, I'm very pleased to have all of our group here with us this evening. Who we don't have this evening, though, is Gail Spears, and I just want to give her a special shout-out, because she has been really instrumental in putting together a lot of our marketing materials, which you will see here shortly. So, unfortunately, she couldn't be here this evening. So, we're just going to give you a really nice overview of how we got here and how we're going to move forward. And to start us off, I'm going to turn it over to Sergeant Jeff Osgood.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Mr. White, and citizens of Fairfield. The City of Fairfield, as part of our, the homeless strategy, as Ms. Labar just mentioned, developed a community education committee to try to figure out ways that we could influence the homeless situation in Fairfield, and transition those that are homeless into some form of stabilized transitional or stabilized housing. And part of that committee came up with, as part of that committee, we came up with a slogan that you'll see in the top right-hand corner of the PowerPoint, and it's called "A Hand Up, Not a Hand Out." Part of our educational strategy is aimed at changing the dynamic or changing the culture in Fairfield, so that we follow the mindset of giving people a hand up and not a hand out. And we'll talk more about that in a moment. Generally, though, we are not talking about changing generosity in Fairfield. We're just talking about changing how people express that generosity. We have some exceptionally generous people in Fairfield, and Fairfield's better for it. But, we think our education campaign will, will help with that. As part of our educate, one of the goals of our education campaign is going to be to encourage people to, to give active referrals to a countywide coordinated entry system that is currently in the process of being developed. That coordinated entry system will be a one point of entry into the system where homeless can be referred to get whatever resources meet their needs at that given moment, at that given time. And what that does is that ensures that the homeless are not being referred to organizations that may not have resources to fit their particular needs, and so, they waste time, and maybe they even fall out of the system, and they don't ultimately get the help that they need. So, but ultimately, the, the total goal of this entire process is to encourage the transition of the homeless to stabilized housing. The committee also developed a strategy, starting with identifying what's happening in Fairfield. Now, most of you know that for the last several years, going back even 20 years, we've had some involvement in trying to address homeless from nonprofit organizations, and efforts on the part of the city, including the Quality of Life Task Force, and our Homeless Intervention Team, dealing with homeless on some level for going back years. We've dealt with, quite frankly, the low-hanging fruit, the ones that are easy to get into transitional housing, because they don't want to be homeless. They've been short-term homeless, they're looking for resources, they're looking for help. Those are the easy ones to deal with. And now, what we're frequently seeing out, out on Fairfield is the, the chronic homeless, the ones that are frankly happy with their lot in life, because they, they may not either know any better, or they're resistant for one reason or another. They're disincentivized to get into the different programs available. So, generally, what we're looking at doing is trying to find ways to educate people, to incentivize them to get involved in, in the services that are available. We also define some well-meaning human, community responses to the homeless that are actually disincentivizing the homeless getting involved and seeking resources. Some of those include giving money or free food at shopping centers, food drop-offs at parks. We have some businesses, as we found out, that are essentially hiring people off the books as employees to provide either security after hours, or even cleaning up outside or inside their businesses in exchange for letting them stay on the property. Other social services have given away tents and cellphones in the past. And then, some private property owners simply, just through inaction, let them, let the homeless set up encampments on private property. All of these contribute to the homeless not being incentivized to go to these programs, because the resources are being brought to them in the community, and they are allowed essentially to just hold their hand out and, and, and be able to sustain that existence. When we give them a hand up and not a hand out, that's going to educate people to change their thinking, so that people will be, the homeless will be incentivized to go to our point-of-entry system. So, some of the strategies that we developed, including transitioning to stabilized housing by educating business owners and managers of the unintended consequences of hiring employees off the books, educating the community of the unintended consequences of direct money or food giving out in the community, outside of a coordinated effort, and also providing community resources in the form of a pamphlet for businesses and the public. And we'll go into that more here in just a few moments. But ultimately, all of this effort is, is going to be geared towards educating the public to direct people into the countywide coordinated entry system. Thank you.
So, we're in the process of developing some public education materials, some brochures, flyers, materials to give to businesses, to service providers, church groups, and anyone else in the community that is in any way connected to homeless people in Fairfield. And this is our kickoff. So, tonight is our first sort of take-it-on-the-road show. We've developed a speakers bureau with all of us and some others that we're, that we're bringing in, that can go and talk to these various groups and, and bring the messages forward. So, we're looking at about mid-July to have all of these materials out in the public. They, we're developing a newsletter that will be linked to the city's website also, with information about local nonprofits and service providers for the homeless, where donations of materials can be made instead of just kind of just giving them wherever. We'll know what the wish lists are for the different providers, the shelters, and the other nonprofits in the community. So, we really want to pull in the community at large and look at the different groups that really work with, with homeless people, especially the churches and the faith communities as well. And we have Pastor Mike Wirth here from The Edge Community Church, who is one of the local leaders in this effort here in Fairfield. So, we're really happy to engage that community as well. Next, I'm going to turn it over to Anthony Russo.
Thank you. I'm just going to speak briefly about some of the, one of the microcosms of the community, which is the businesses on North Texas Street. North Texas is a, is a problem area. The homeless groups that are there are more hardcore. They're either mentally ill or addicted in a lot of occasions, and they're difficult to deal with. And for every business that was trying to fight it, there were those that were enabling it. Things like putting canned food into bushes so the homeless could pick them up, leaving microwaves out so they could warm their food, allowing people to sleep in their entryways and plug their phones in, a number of things that just continue to exacerbate the problem. In every business that was fighting it, there was one that was enabling it. So, what we're going to do now is we're going to get out to the businesses. They need to know their rights. They need to know that they have the right not to have people panhandle in their communities, not to have people sleep in their doorways. They need to understand the liabilities of hiring homeless. Things is feeding them for sweeping the steps. They become, they become liable for things like workers' compensation and all those other employee taxes. A lot of the businesses don't know how to deal with the homeless. They don't know that they have a right to have a letter signed with the city where the police will come and, and remove people for trespassing without calling. What we're going to do is get that word out. The other thing that we're looking at, and it's in the lower left-hand corner, is that sign. There are no loitering signs all over North Texas Street. They blend into the woodwork. Nobody sees them. They just don't do anything anymore. This sign is going to become the new, basically, the, the light that you'll see, hopefully... hopefully amongst all the businesses. And the idea is that we want to get people to services and not to just continue to exacerbate the problem.
So we have an amazing business community here because for years, we've been hearing all the complaints. Well, we have a solution now. We have a start, and they are so excited. Whether it's a North Texas Street business or a Chamber of Commerce business, the feedback has been, "How can we help? Sign us up. We are there for you." North Texas Street, I have 10 businesses who are going to, as soon as we get the brochures, they will be walking the streets. They will make sure that every one of their neighbors knows about this campaign. It's very important, and really, it's, we're doing something. They actually see us doing something. And I think that it was important, you know? We did listen to the business community, and it was time. We couldn't wait any longer. And this is our start, and this is what we're doing. And you will hear a lot more about "A Hand Up, Not a Hand Out."
So they say you don't know what you don't know. So that's what our public campaign is about. We want everybody to know, and we want everybody to know the right information. So one big thing is, in case anybody doesn't know, our local agencies provide great services. But you need to know about those services. You need to know about those agencies. So that is one thing we're going to make sure that people start knowing. We also want to get people better networking together so that we can work together coordinatedly. Because one agency doing one thing, not knowing another agency's doing the same thing, it's not working. We all need to work together, and that is what we want to do. We also want to educate our donors on how to make donations and how to do it in a way that it's going to make a difference in the end and not just give somebody some trash somewhere else, you know, three blocks away. To do this, we need to educate the public and the donors about what types of resources are needed for each organization. So for example, somebody comes to me and they give me seven boxes of children's clothing. I have some clients that have kids, but I probably don't need seven boxes full. So I know that there's three other churches and two other nonprofits that can use that stuff. So what we do, we turn around and say, "Well, you took what we need," and we give it to the right organization so that gets used by somebody who can use it. So that's what we're looking to do. We're trying to get everybody to work together, and we need the public's help in doing that so that all the resources we do have get used to the best of our abilities.
So I mentioned earlier a resource card that would be available for, to be passed out to both the community members that could assist in making referrals to the coordinated entry system and also to the homeless so that they would know what resources they would have, that they have available to them. One of the things that, you know, we're, you know, that we want to make sure that people understand is that it's important that people direct their resources to, not just to the individual homeless, but to resources where they can do the most coordinated good. And that's really the ultimate purpose behind this education program is to, is to help people find a better way to deal with these things and give people a hand up, not a hand out. Over time, this is not going to be something that's going to happen right away. We know that. All education programs are cumulative. They build on each other, and we'll develop additional strategies as time goes forward. But over time, our goal is to incentivize the homeless to actively participate in the system so that they can get the resources and help they need and to eliminate the disincentives to participate. The resource card that we passed out to you, as an example, it is being developed, but I just wanted to pass it out to you so you'd know generally what it might look like. It's a double-sized, two-sided business card, and it has a list of resources available. Again, that would be handed out to those in need, and that could be, you know, those in need of money, food, clothes, or maybe even other resources like mental health or substance abuse. But ultimately, the goal is to, is to change the culture of the homeless, thinking that they can stay, you know, stay in the community and have the community just bring them all the support that they need to continue being homeless. At the end of the day, our ultimate goal is to minimize those incentives to, you know, for homeless to avoid the, to avoid resources, to provide opportunities for the coordinated effort to connect people to the most appropriate resources for their particular need and ultimately to improve the quality of life for all Fairfield residents. Thank you. I'd like to introduce Dan from Tri-City Elks.
I would like everyone to focus on the screen. And as you focus on the screen, take those words in. Read them to yourself and let them reach deep into your heart. Our goal is a hand up, not a hand out. These words were formulated to help you and those that have a need to be prepared to move ahead as we educate you and change the culture. Ladies and gentlemen, a hand up is what's needed. Please support us as we work to change the culture. Thank you.
So as you can see, this is, this is something we really put a lot of effort into when we're really excited about moving this forward and getting started. We are looking for productive ways to be involved. As Debbie said, we've formed a speakers bureau, and we're ready to take that out on the road and get, get meetings set up with our service providers and our community groups and our churches and finding ways for them to get involved as well. We're looking for hand-up sponsors. I'm going to just totally call out Jeff Don Levy, who I noticed in the audience. So you'll be getting a phone call from us pretty soon. And of course, we want to encourage collaboration. We want people to be proactive. Biggest thing is we really want to really do a much better job at keeping the community informed, and I think this is definitely going to be the group that's going to do that. And one of the messages we really need to keep relaying to the public is that if we see something, to say something. And that we, our overall goal has always been and will continue to be that we want to direct our homeless to existing services because we want to get them off the streets. So from here, we'll be working on our budget and getting our marketing materials, and we'll be moving forward with this. And as I said, we're really excited about it. So, and again, if we're looking for speakers, et cetera, you can all contact myself. And then if you want to be a sponsor, Jeff Don Levy, you can contact Debbie Tavy. And then we'll have, soon have a link up on our city website at www.fairfield.ca.gov/handup. And we're really excited about the webpage that we're going to be creating as well. So that's it. Does anyone have any questions?
Yes, Councilwoman Bertani, and then Councilwoman White, please. Councilwoman White?
Great presentation. I, as you guys know, am very involved in this day-to-day, literally, day-to-day. Especially when I say that I appreciate what Anthony Russo had to say about the businesses on North Texas Street. And we do know that some are enablers, and many of them want the vagrants to go away. And let's call them what they are. We have homeless people who are willing to get help, and then we have those who are mentally ill or addicts, drug addicts, alcoholics, or both, or all of the above. So we also need to educate people what we can do for those people. And I really have to tell you, I don't know because we don't have enough mental health beds, detox beds. So that's a big problem, and it's a quagmire. But, you know, in the meantime, the two homeless shelters in Fairfield are not represented on your committee, and I was wondering why that was.
Certainly, well, we have Can Be, who is on the committee, and Can Be is in Fairfield. We just really needed to keep the committee small. We just needed one representation. It wasn't necessarily an oversight. It was just Can Be, yeah, represented, representation from each group as, just like with the business community, the churches, et cetera.
Yeah, 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 we can talk about that later. So how about your funding? Where's that coming from? I heard you just say Mr. Don Levy is going to be giving you some money. And so I was wondering, who else besides Mr. Don Levy is? Where's the funding coming from? Is the city giving money to this?
No, there will be no city funds used for this. We will be completely seeking private donations and sponsorships for this. So we have a small subcommittee made up, and we will be seeking donations for that. So we're not going to put it all on Jeff, thankfully.
All right, Jeff, you got cut some slack there. Thank you. It was a great presentation, and I agree. Once Cam and I gets their business together and we have one point of contact to, you know, get the information out, it'll make it a lot easier. But we do need to work on mental health beds. And if we don't get that in detox, then we're going to continue with this, you know, this mess. So, but you guys are doing a really important, a really, really important thing. Because I think businesses don't know that they have to sign a letter, you know, on private property saying the cops can come and clear. They don't know that. I didn't know that until I was trying to get somebody off some, you know, longtime businessperson's property. And I was like, "What do you mean? They can't, they can go in there and sleep in their bushes and poop at their doorway?" No, I don't think so. But, you know, anyway, those are my things. I just wanted to thank all of you. I know that you're all very passionate people, and I appreciate you very much. If there's anything I can do, let me know. Thanks.
Mr. City Manager, you had to respond.
Just, Councilwoman White, I just want to add the county is actually recently being recommended for a three-year, $6 million grant with the sole purpose, it was done under Proposition 47. And the purpose of that grant specifically is to increase the number of detox beds within the county. So they'll be looking to create a number of different environments, sober living environments, transitional housing environments, all focused on dealing with substance abuse, individuals dealing with substance abuse. So your call, your concern is being heard, and I'm happy to hear that the county's taking some good action.
Councilwoman Bertani, please, and then Rick.
I want to commend you for having the fortitude to engage this issue from a different perspective and one that sounds like it will be effective. Knowledge is power. Knowledge is power, the old axiom goes. And so I believe in what you're doing, and I know, looking at the faces standing before me on this committee, it's going to get done. So I really appreciate your efforts. I had a conversation last week, a prolonged one, with the city manager and the chief of police and our city attorney. And part of the equation here that is frustrating that we on this dais need to fix is that we do not have the proper ordinance structure in place to really maximize your efforts and our efforts in terms of dealing with and managing the homeless population in the city of Fairfield. I live here and drive up and down these streets every day. And what I see is an escalating number of homeless folks who are in the same place every day, on time, with the same number of carts, who are just, they're there. And I was told during this conversation by our city officials that we literally have no power to force these individuals off the streets of our city. And so if the woman in front of CVS, who we know, who she thinks she owns CVS, if she wants to be in my neighborhood with her cart on that lawn in front of CVS 24/7, do you know that we have no authority at all to change that situation? That's frustrating because, let's face it, there are a number of, a good number of homeless folks who, you can educate people all you want, they want to be left alone. To live in this city, in the parks, and in my neighborhood in front of CVS and in front of Liberty Christian and Walmart, they're there in front. It's a problem that requires a both-and solution, not either-or. So I applaud what you're doing. At the same time, I want to challenge my colleagues to consider an ordinance, an ordinance like other cities have that are, that prevent camping on our streets. No camping on our streets. It's a no camping ordinance, I think, is what it's called. And they're frequently employed by different cities. I think we need one here because what you're saying is you're putting together an infrastructure to increase exposure to information and resources that are available to our homeless folks. That coupled with such an ordinance, I think, would improve the prospect of us really changing the way our streets look and the city's culture for managing our homeless population. So I am going to ask that we agendize, David, is this?
I'll second that.
That we agendize evaluating a no camping ordinance that passes constitutional muster but that gives our police department and our city officials an ability to actually get people to the resources that we're trying to get them to as opposed to saying, "We know that these people, this person has been there for, you know, six months, but there's nothing we can do." That is the tail wagging the dog. And so I think that considering an ordinance that empowers our officers to, you know, clean up our streets and get these folks where they can get services and get better, I think that would be a good partner to your efforts and what you're doing that I applaud.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jay.
Councilwoman Picaro, please.
Thank you. First of all, thank you, Don, everybody else who spoke up there. I know you guys are working really hard, and we hear it every day from our citizens and from our business owners, you know, the problems on North Texas, on West Texas, all over the city. One thing I really want to commend you guys for, I know, for someone who's worked with at-risk families for a long, long time in Fairfield, this, you know, having the resources is really the critical part because there's so many families that I've dealt with over the years in Fairfield that don't know where to go for help, don't know where to go for clothing, don't know where to go for food, just really in mental health, too. I know the city and the county are working together right now and trying to get more mental health people out there because that is the number-one problem in the United States right now, is mental health issues. You can tie it to every crime that you see out there, and it's really mental health. But I think the resource guide is really critical. We established a resource guide over at Golden Hills where I worked for a long time, and it really, really helped our families out there, which a lot of them were homeless, too. And some of them were sleeping in their cars and on the street. But with the information provided, they actually improved their lifestyle and their children's lifestyle, which was critical for me. So thank you, guys, for what you're doing, and whatever I can do to help, you know how to reach me, so.
And let me conclude by saying, what you're beginning here, involving the business community, taking the lead and working with so many other agencies and coming up with realistic solutions to problems that are persisting all across the world, not just these United States. And this might be, it might well be, the effort that results in some productive changes. And certainly, the suggestion colleagues about an ordinance would help, all the ammunition you can get. Well, bless you all for the task that you have put before you, and thank you for using a city council meeting aired on Channel 26 for a broad section of the community to realize that we're serious now. Thank you very much.
Job well done. Thank you. There's one other thing that I wanted to bring up, not necessarily cheap, but I wanted to bring it up because a citizen did, and it has to do with homeless folks. And what it is is the young, the softball players out at Allenwood Park are not allowed to go inside the gym to use the restroom. So I don't know if the city put up the, you know, the porta-potties out there, but the porta-potties have locks on them. Apparently, some vagrants cut the locks off, and they've been using... Apparently some vagrants cut the locks off and, um, they've been using them as a place to do drugs, sleep, um, and everything else that you can imagine. So I would ask that the city allow, take those things away. They stink too on top of it. People who are going in to swim can smell them. People who, uh, go to play tennis can smell them. That's not what we want to do. We don't, we don't want to enable them. And then on top of it, the city made, apparently, the softball people buy the locks that the vagrants cut off, no can do. Okay, so let's get those out of there and allow the people who pay our taxes, their children use the toilets, okay? Thanks.
Again, thank you very much. And our second presentation, please, Madam Clerk.
Green Business Award presentation by John Dunleavy and Sandra Gonzalez from Republic Services.
And our, Blanco, please. Esther.
I'm Marceen Green.
Good evening. My name is Esther Blanco. I'm a management analyst for the Public Works Department. Tonight, we're going to take a few moments to recognize some of the leaders and our sustainable businesses. This is a program that we've started back in 2012. I'll go through a few slides and we'll try to keep it short, but we have some great people here. In 2012, we started a partnership with Republic Services to recognize businesses and schools that focus on sustainable practices. We want to highlight local businesses that do incredible work in the community and we want to inspire other businesses to do the same thing. Sustainable practices can help business operate more efficiently and effectively and they can actually save money and resources. We have different categories. We don't always hit every category. We've, um, so far given out 19 awards over the past several years. But we break it down, usually an industrial, a commercial, nonprofit. We try to do multifamily housing and schools. Each area has challenges, each ones have opportunities. And so we like to highlight somebody from each of the areas whenever possible. Helping me present is Jeff Don Levy, who, um, we've, has been a star for the last half an hour. He is a division manager for Republic Services. And Sandra Gonzalez, who is the recycling coordinator, coordinator for Republic Services and I. This year, we will be presenting our awards to Dave's Giants Hamburger, Fairfield Susun Produce Pipeline, Contra Costa Salona Food Bank, and the Samiato High School Science Club. So, um, if you would mind, please come out. Dave's Giants Hamburger, Lisa Gonzalez will be here to accept the award. You want to get in the middle towards Jeff, don't you? There you go. They have been a local landmark since 1963. They started diverting their food waste in 2014. They have about five gallons of food waste compostable materials that actually go to a farm every day to Susun. Over the past year, they have diverted about 780 pounds of organic materials. They actually have their employees separating out all the food waste. So you have to appreciate that. They're really dedicated to go through, you know, all the stuff that goes through the counter and all the stuff that gets processed in the back. So thank you so much. We appreciate it. Organics is a big concern of the state right now. And so this is something that all businesses will be doing in the future. Thank you. We are going to also, um, recognize Carol Hendricks from the Produce Pipeline. And here she comes. She'll be coming down with Emma from Kiwanis. Carol is actually going to retire, but she started this process in 2009. Initially, she was gleaning fruits and vegetables from local farms and from residents who had too many vegetables or fruit and they didn't know what to do with it. And she would donate all that to the local food bank and shelters. In 2011, she started collecting from the local farmer's market. She found that that was much more efficient use of everybody's time. It's donated through the food banks, pantries, and shelters run by churches. And she'll, um, let's see. 1,200 pounds of food has been donated over the last eight years, which is a lot of food that's been diverted from going into the landfill. She has volunteers on the key club, um, from the Kiwanis are a, a big help. But she has 20 to 30 volunteers, um, and they come from all, all walks of life. She's actually planning to retire this year and she's passing the torch on to Kiwanis. And Emma, my little dead voice, I hope I didn't ruin your name. And she'll be helping us out. Um, I'll be seeing her Thursday at the farmer's market. Thank you so much. We also wanted to highlight the Contra Costa Salona Food Bank. Because I think people don't realize exactly what the food bank does. They do an amazing amount of getting food from all over the place, from donations, um, to actually purchasing with grants and donated funds. So they operate on many different levels. They'll get corporate donations, so Walmart, um, Food Max, Safeway, a lot of the large grocery stores have, uh, accounts with them, national accounts. So if they know that the food's going to expire, they actually donate it to the food bank before there's a problem. So all these things take coordination. And then within that, they have other food banks that they work with. So if they get too much, um, in one location, they, they distribute it within, within others so that it gets shared. They also get, uh, food, food drive donations from the public. And they also purchase large bulk items. If you've ever toured their facility on Courage Drive, it's actually amazing. It's a huge warehouse and they buy things in humongous bulks and it all gets distributed, um, through their network. And then they also do something which not every farm may, or farmer, or local farms or people that have, um, even if you have five acres and something growing, donate, donations and volunteers are always their first, um, you know, first choice. But they do have the ability to pay to get, um, produce picked or gleaned so that the food will be donated. And it's something that is a nice thing to know if there's somebody out there that may have purchased a, um, a farm and they're just not interested in the fruit or produce. And there are people that have retired and they would gladly donate it if somebody else can't picked it. So, um, in addition to that, they're also great recyclers. They do cardboard, plastic, paper. And over the last several years, they've managed to reduce their trash service to one time a week, which is a lot when you see, you see the size of their warehouse and how much stuff they have in there. That's actually quite amazing. Thank you so much. The last group's going to be a really big group, so it might take them a few minutes to come down. The Samiato High School Science Group, Club, um, attended a conference in Monterey called the Ocean Plastic Pollution Summit. And as part of that summit, they created a project and they collaborated with Monterey Bay to encourage the Fairfield-Susun Unified School District to eliminate the use of single-use plastic disposables. Um, that, that encompasses a lot of things, but mainly, uh, cups, cups, plates, plastic bags, straws. So the, the students created this presentation and they gave it to the school board, the superintendent and the, and the district staff. They described the impact that disposable plastics have on marine life and the ocean's ecosystem and how the plastic breaks down and actually gets into your, it gets into your food. They did a cost analysis. They actually found out how much the district was spending. They had, well, they found out how much it would cost to purchase compostable items, recyclable items, and they actually presented all this in a report to the school district. They explained how the school district could actually increase their diversion rate and benefit the environment and save money in the long run. So the, and since then, and it's not a direct result, but since then, they've actually have switched all their styrofoam containers over to recyclable and compostable ones, which is a huge thing because, uh, styrofoam basically breaks down and it is in the environment forever. So the more, the less styrofoam everybody uses, the better off we are. So I'm going to just do one more slide, just so I can get all the names correct. So the students, um, we have are Bella Belloquez, Diego Ortega, Tatiana Romanesque, Marco Bellastroz, Wayley, Sue Miller, and Brandon Wyatt are the teachers. And we have the administrator, the assistant principal who is here, James Hightower. And he's in the audience. He didn't step down. Thank you, thank you for sharing your students. And thank you for a great project.
Thanks, Wesley.
Esther, thank you. And Jeff, Sandra, and the groups that you've recognized, what a difference indeed they're making in our community, so. And as you always tell me, Jeff, things are picking up, aren't they? Thank you. We turn now to the process for public comments. Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
Speakers may address items on this agenda at the time each item is considered. Under public comments, the public may speak on items not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the city council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items, except as authorized by law. Off-agenda items from the public will be taken under consideration without discussion by the council and may be referred to staff. To speak on an agenda item, please complete a speaker's card and give it to the city clerk before the meeting or at the latest prior to the time for public comments on that item. Speakers are requested to limit their comments to four minutes with one minute to summarize their remarks.
Thank you. And our first speaker will be Jeff Traeger, to be followed by Terry Lucchini, please.
Hello, everybody. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say, uh, congratulations to Rick Vicaro on his upcoming, uh, retirement. There's nobody, uh, there's not a profession I, I, that I believe is more important than educators. And Rick has put in many, many years and I, I congratulate him. What's going on at the Downtown Theater from Travis Air Force Base? Tomorrow night, this is free to the public. We have the, uh, the Travis Air Force Base Band from the Golden West. And they will be performing tomorrow night. This Saturday night, we've got two great blues guitarists, Tommy Castro and his band, The Painkillers, Alon Johnson, uh, in a tribute to, uh, one of, one of our, uh, gentlemen that passed last year. His name is Sean McGordy from Vacaville, who was the, one of the pillars of the blues community. Uh, we've got many more shows coming up. We've got a tribute to the Rat Pack coming in August. And tribute to Johnny Cash. And then in November, we have The Great Confunction. So, um, those are things that we have coming. On the 16th, uh, to finish up, uh, starting a run of two weeks will be Annie. So, uh, thank you very much.
Honorable councilmembers, mayor and, uh, city manager. My name's, excuse me, my name's Terry Lucchini. I'm the president for the Fairfield Employees Association. And, um, I'm going to keep it really brief. I wanted to preface it also with, um, Dawn Labar's group, which I think already left. So super excited to see positive movement in that direction. So we emailed her as we sat in the audience about meeting with her. So we're excited about that. The reason I came here tonight was to, uh, I'm here with, um, uh, some of my fellow union members and, um, and SCIU. And we're here to express to the council our frustration with the progress of our current contract negotiations. From the beginning, we expressed a very strong, um, sentiment to actually get our negotiations finished in a timely manner, which would be by June 30th, 2017. And we've had six sessions with the city team, but we've made very little progress. We began giving proposals, uh, to the city team on April 13th. And the city has yet to respond to all those proposals, so it's a little bit frustrating. We had mutually agreed with the city's bargaining team, um, to have everything on the table by May 10th. And we received something from them via email on May 18th. So, uh, that date kind of came and went. It's a little bit frustrating. So on behalf of my members here, I'm just asking that the city of Fairfield, uh, that city council help move forward, um, this process so we can, we can finish it all and, and have some, um, some resolution to it. We have three bargaining sessions left and, uh, we need a contract. We want a good contract and we want a fair contract. So thank you for having us tonight.
Thank you, Terry. With Tom Nelson, to be followed by Robert Marin, please.
Honorable mayor, members of the council, city staff, city administration. Uh, my name is Tom Nelson. I think this is about the eighth meeting I've been here to chat with you about, uh, the kids, uh, being able to make tee times at our golf courses, uh, which will result in making it easier for kids to utilize the golf facilities here in Fairfield. But tonight I also have a secondary question because maybe I need a little bit of a civics lesson here. Uh, it's a little bit rhetorical, but, um, uh, I kind of need to know, who do you represent, city council, and who do you have responsibility to oversee? And so I'm interested in who do you actually represent and who do you oversee? So to start, five weeks ago at the council meeting, uh, this was said, uh, by Councilman Tim and...
Anything, can they, any, anything in, different from what Vice Mayor Tim has just communicated? It was clear with me that tee times can be made at any...
What Mr. Cessna told me, uh, and he runs the golf courses, so that's all I know right now.
And Tom, just so you know, we did follow up based on our last interaction directly with Mr. Cessna at Kemper to talk about the tee time issue. And he didn't convey any, anything in, different from what Vice Mayor Tim has just communicated. It was clear with me that tee times can be made at any time of the day because I know that was the concern at the last council meeting.
Okay. Uh, so again, Mr. Cessna told two people on two different occasions that I was essentially kind of bat crazy and that kids could make tee times at any times during, during the day. And so just to say that again.
Tee times can be made at any time of the day.
And that's Mr. White.
Tee times can be made at any time of the day.
Any time of the day. Okay. So I went to the head professional over at Rancho Salona, uh, Jim Wagner, and, um, had another recording, which I sent off to a couple of the council members, uh, just to kind of prove my sanity. And he explained to me that kids could not make tee times every time during the day. Uh, Mr. Cessna then shows up at the next council meeting, which was three weeks ago, uh, and takes my time to tell everybody what a great job he does. And he does do a good job at many different things and how much he loves kids. And I don't, I know he loves his kids and I don't question any of that. But he did have, uh, this, just to say, this is all he said in response to the, um, to the tee times issue.
So we do allow juniors to play. They do not make tee times prior to noon and it's seven days a week.
Okay, so just, just...
So we do allow juniors to play. They do not make tee times prior to noon and it's seven days a week.
Okay, so now we have some conflict. So Mr. White asked Mr. Cessna to put the policy down in writing and he wrote in a memo, and I quote, "However, youth, uh, paying the reduced youth rates may not reserve tee times in advance. Junior golfers are placed within a schedule for the first open tee time available after checking in." And that isn't before noon, that's afternoon.
Tom, would you conclude, please?
Sure, absolutely will. So... So basically, we have three things. Tom is crazy, kids can't make times, uh, anytime during the day. Kids cannot make times, uh, before noon, but they can do it afternoon. And now it's, kids can make times afternoon all day. Bottom line is, who's telling the truth here? Okay, and this is my question. We, what happened is, is that when I came, the, the, the people of Fairfield, the people that signed the petition, myself came here and brought this issue up, we are the ones that are telling you the truth. The question is, when will you do something to go and actually question the city administration and find out what is going to happen here? And what do we do from here at this particular point?
Thank you, Tom. Your time is up. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor? I'm going to ask that that be agendized so we can just get this straightened out. I, I just need to have, uh, staff here. It can be a really short time thing if somebody will support me, so we can just get this out. support me, so we can just get this out. We do need to make it clear, all of us, our bosses are every resident, including children in this town. I think there's about 110,000 of us. Who answers directly to us is the city attorney and the city manager, and then the flow goes down from there. So, the residents here are our bosses. And I hope that answers your question, but I cannot agendize anything by myself, so I would need somebody to help me with that, but I'm willing to put it on the agenda.
I am all for information, as I stated previously, but I just need to know exactly what the question is we're agendizing.
We're agendizing exactly what is going on with youth making tee times and why, you know, exactly what is going on with that, okay? Can they make tee times after noon, or can't they? And if they can, do they have to pay the full price? And if so, is there some way that we can accommodate them so they don't have to pay full price and get bumped all the time? Because it's hard when you're the parent of somebody. You take them out at 3 o'clock, they have a tee time, but then they get bumped because they're not paying the adult price. So, you know, I'd like to see us talk through that and see how that works.
Okay. So, I think we have an answer to part of the question regarding whether or not youth can make tee times prior to noon, and the answer is no. Is that correct? Based on what the owner just stated?
I'm sorry, but that's not even the issue. And at the risk, and I appreciate the thing, but Mr. White knows that since January, I've offered to meet with either him, actually specifically him, because the staff is not receptive to this at all. And I, before I waste any more of your people's time, because we're wasting not only our time, but everybody that's watching this, or everybody out here that probably wants to go home and do something, if anybody would just give me, I asked for 15 minutes of Mr. White's time. And if I could just get that 15 minutes, maybe stretch it to 30, I think we can come up, this is a really simple issue that I think that the city would know, and that I would be happy to take one more council meeting and come back here and make a report as to what transpires.
And I sent an email to you today, Tom, that Alicia will work with you to set up a meeting for you, Julie, and myself to get together. And I think it'd be good for Julie to be in the meeting because she oversees the staff that manage golf operations.
Julie Crowe?
Who?
Julie Crowe?
No, Julie Lucido. She's our assistant public works director.
And I would respectfully request to just meet with you, Mr. White.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're moving on. Robert Marin, please.
Can I, can I follow up, just to make sure that we're all on the same page here? So, can you step back to the mic, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't want to be out of order.
Okay. So, you're saying, Tom, that you would rather than agendize it at this point, have the meeting with David and see if you can hash it out with him as opposed to waste, using council time to do that? Is that what you're saying?
I believe everybody at this table is in favor of the city, wants the best for the kids, wants the best for everybody in Fairfield. And if I can just get 15 minutes of Mr. White's time, and only Mr. White's time, okay? I think we can come up with a solution to this.
And then, at that point, if there is no resolution, then we need to agendize it.
I'll make a, I'll make an actual written thing. I'll probably take you up on your office hours. That's probably a warning. Sorry.
Okay. I'll be there.
And, and at the...
Okay. And David, and hopefully this meeting can happen before our next council meeting.
Yeah. Okay.
And at the risk of...
Good. That takes care of that. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Robert Marin, please.
Thank you.
And to be followed by Joe Summers.
This will be a lot easier. First of all, Mr. Mayor, council, thank you for letting me speak tonight, Mr. City Manager. I'd like to take just a little story about something I saw really positive this week. And matter of fact, it occurred yesterday, so somebody might be knowing what I'm talking about. My wife and I had went to lunch, and during our conversation, we had spoke about different things regarding the city and what we saw and what was happening. And after finishing our lunch, we then left the north part of Fairfield and headed southbound on North Texas Street and stopped at the stoplight at North Texas Street and Air Base Parkway, which was in front of Burger King. So, my wife was approximately one car ahead of me. Well, during this time, I looked over to my right, and I saw a gentleman that was dressed in a collared shirt, a tie, and it caught my attention immediately. And upon seeing this, I looked at it, and I said, boy, this person looks familiar. So, at one point in time, the person looks up, and apparently, I guess, my wife, because my wife was one car ahead of me, had said something. And at that time, I noticed that I know this individual. And this individual was out there with a pair of latex gloves, a large bag of trash, and was picking up items in front of Burger King. And at that time, I noticed it was our city manager, Mr. White, who seemed a little bit taken back. I rolled down the window, and I said, great job. So, I just wanted to extend a thank you to Mr. White for doing that. It meant a lot to me. I know we've talked about it in the past regarding some of the blight that I've seen around North Texas Street, and it was great to see the city manager out there. I'm sure you didn't want to be called on this, but I thought it was very important, and it meant a lot to me to see that. So, Mr. White, I appreciate you being out there and taking time and doing that, one bag at a time. Thank you.
And Robert, thank you for taking the time to do that.
Of course.
A good example. Really is. Thank you very much.
Always good to hear good things.
Joe Summers, please. To be followed by Tim Dowling.
Mayor, council members, my name is Joe Summers. I'm a 27-year resident and, well, lifelong resident of Fairfield. And first of all, I would like to say regarding the SCIU contract, I would urge you to support them in expediting their contract. They work hard, and they deserve a fair contract, so that would be great. But the reason I came here today is to, I sent you an email about it already, but I just wanted to come briefly to talk about it. I want to urge the mayor to join 210 other mayors across the U.S. in supporting the Paris Accords and supporting the goals of lowering our CO2 emissions. Friday, the federal administration did a really irresponsible thing, in my opinion, and left the Paris Accords. I don't think that climate change is a real topic that is controversial anymore. I think that it's widely believed that we do have an effect on our environment and that it is, it's a problem that we can fix. So, I think that pulling out of it doesn't really absolve us of our responsibility to act on climate change. And I think that, you know, in addition to the effect that it has on our environment, that it has an effect on the jobs. California has been a real advocate for clean energy and moving our way to a clean environment, and we have created a lot of manufacturing, a lot of building and construction jobs around, around clean energy. So, it's my generation and future generations that are really going to be affected by the increase in CO2 and the increase in temperatures, and I do hope that you will, you know, take action on this, because inaction is the wrong thing to do at this point.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tim Dowling, please, to be followed by our final speaker under public comments, Mr. George Gwynn, please.
Hi. I know you have a big agenda, so I appreciate that these public comments come up early so we can talk, speak on issues. I have an issue that I wanted to talk about that, I've lived in this town for over 50 years, and there, I've never seen an instance of this issue that I'm bringing up go on as long as it has, and that is that storage of vehicles on streets. And typically, they're enforced, and they're moved, and this particular situation, I think, is a real extreme example of it. And the fact that it goes on is ongoing, and has been parked on a city street for two months is an issue that needs to be addressed. The police, I've talked to the police department about it, and they said that the laws that are on the books right now allow a very narrow process that they go through. And I think it's influenced by the fact that a lot of people are working 40 weeks now. And so, there's a 78-hour notice required on vehicles when they're stored on the street. And so, the person who actually tags this vehicle, in this instance, a 30-foot trailer, will not be available to follow up on it within the 78 hours a lot of times. The other thing is that this particular individual that owns this trailer, it's been parked on the street for two months. He's aware that he's not supposed to leave it there. But the police's interpretation is that all he has to do is move it a foot every 78 hours, and he can leave it out on the street. This is in a neighborhood of $500,000 homes, and I live nearby, and I think it's outrageous that this is going on this way. And every time they mark the tires, their perspective is that they're required to issue another eight-and-a-half-by-11 notice and put it on his door. And as opposed to parking on the street that has a two-hour notice, and this police just come by and chalk it and tow it if it stays there longer, or ticket it. And this, the guy is just gaming. He drives a four-wheel-drive vehicle, so every 78 hours, he hooks the trailer up and moves it a foot. So, the police's suggestion is that you need, at a minimum, a length definition of, an excessive length is not allowed in a neighborhood. And the other idea would be that they need to move it a bigger distance than a foot to make it more inconvenient. But I think as an example, if you made a minimum, a maximum length of 20-foot or 15-foot in front of a house, it would give them some teeth to use and to stop this. But I think it's just really out of line. And I think, I don't live near this house, but if I did, I would really be upset, because it covers the whole front of their house and, excuse me, has an impact on neighbors. And if I was selling a house, I would think it would really impact the sale, which eventually will impact the revenues of the city of Fairfield, because the, to my understanding, the city of Fairfield derives tax benefit from the value of the homes. And so, I just think this has gotten way out of line. The police are sympathetic, the police are sympathetic, but they just don't feel like they have the right options. And I think that it needs to happen quickly so that it doesn't go on longer. And other cities, Vacaville and Benicia, for example, have laws that allow this not to happen there. And I'm just really shocked. I've never seen this in the city of Fairfield. And I think that the longer it stays there, the more people that have vehicles and storage will be inclined to take them out and park them in front of their house.
Mr. Dowling, I think you're seeing the nodding of heads here, because we've all had those complaints. So, Mr. City Manager, perhaps there needs to be a solution that Mr. Dowling is suggesting.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you bringing this to our attention, and so let me get together with the city attorney and police chief, and we can talk about what are the practical solutions we could implement so that we could address your concerns. I appreciate it.
Great. I appreciate it, and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, while you're doing that, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you could, I've sent pictures and talked to you about 2 trillion times about people living in RVs, not in the neighborhood of 500,000, but in a neighborhood that's lower income. And people are parked down there. Right now, I could go down there, I could go there at 3:00 in the morning and catch them sleeping in their RVs. They're in there. They're in there with one, with four pit bulls that got loose and attacked another dog recently. And it's getting larger, and more and more people are parking on there. And it's on Jefferson Street, it's on Ohio Street, and it's down around the property that we are soon going to own, that the school district used to own. And I sent you their license plates and everything. These people are not, I mean, they're not really sly. I've knocked on their door before and told them to get that out. And, you know, they don't listen to me because I don't have a badge yet. So, I'm still looking to be, you know, deputized. But anyway, if we could look at that, too, and see what we can do about stopping that, if the camping ordinance would do that, that would be great. But we need to be able to get them out, too.
So be it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our final speaker under public comments will be Mr. George Gwynn, please.
Good evening, once again. It's, you well know, there is no local money, state money, federal money. It's really taxpayer money. You guys are agents for the taxpayers, and hopefully you make good decisions and wise uses of the money. That said, I think it's a lot easier to think about these things ahead of time than it is after you get in trouble. For instance, I recall there was a pretty good sum of money spent for the mural for the old theater. It caught fire, which I guess nobody could predict. But I can't remember the exact amount. It was somewhere, I believe, between $40,000 and $60,000. But anyway, I noticed recently the walls tore down, so I guess that money's gone now. But if there was anything that you guys could think about to protect the money ahead of time, it would be a lot better than just losing the money. And same thing applies to real estate deals that you bought at a high price and had to sell at a low price. I think a good one that there probably should be a solution for is the dispute you had with the Caltrans people over some houses that caught fire close to I-80. I believe there was a question about who was responsible, the city or the Caltrans. Regardless of who's responsible, the taxpayer still picks up the tab. And the only way the public can put the blame on individual people is there's a violation of the agency principle, if you act outside of your agency, which is hard to prove. But anyway, in the case of the Caltrans thing, it would have been a lot cheaper for the city of Fairfield or Caltrans to just go ahead and mow the weeds, eliminate the weed problem. It would be to go to court and have a lot of money go down the tubes. And same thing applies to this lawsuit with the so-called whistleblower that once worked for the city of Fairfield. I think there's going to be maybe another million dollars. There's already close to a million dollars that went out for the initial settlement, but then for the individual to sue, there's another possible million. So, we're getting somewhere between 1. something and $2 million possible going down the tubes. And especially right now, since money's tight, that's not a good thing. So, I would hope that you guys are extra careful to make sure that we don't get more of these kind of things, because it's very easy to prevent them ahead of time, but once you get entrenched, it's very hard to get a solution. So, I hope you're always thinking about what could happen if things don't go right, because it's a lot better than waiting till after if things are bad and then there's a real problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you, George. I don't have any other request to speak cards. We turn then to the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar will be approved with one motion, unless a member of the audience chooses to take separate action. I do have one request to speak card colleague, I have two requests to speak cards, colleagues. The first of them will be Zachary Wright, and this will be item number eight. And then, Mr. Gwynn wants to speak on item number five, please. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, council members, I just wanted to thank you again for the time and the consideration. Your staff has been helpful throughout this process. We're looking forward to building the next leg of villages at Fairfield and making a left turn lane, dual left turn lane on Air Base, which is a huge problem and had some public outreach. So, just wanted to thank you for your time and let people aware in the public that we would, to be safe during this construction process as well. So, thank you.
And thank you for being with us this evening, Zachary. That's item number eight. And then, item number five, George, please. Mr. George Gwynn.
Good evening again. This only, I believe, is to write off accounts receivable, and I believe it's for roughly $200,000, and that seems like a lot of money. I would hope that there might be some other thing that could be done to save at least part of this money, because I understand that things can happen sometimes that get out of hand, but $200,000 is a lot of money. So, I would hope that you guys look at that again. Thank you very much.
Any other request to speak cards? So, before we take action, the city attorney needs to explain some conflicts of interest that the three of us have and our other two colleagues have that in same conflict. that the three of us have, and our other two colleagues have, that in same conflict.
Yes. So this evening, there are some items involving assessments that each of you, because your ownership of homes, will have to abstain on, so I'll just run through the list here. These just need to be noted on the record, since this is on the consent calendar, you do not need to leave the room, but we need to have the records show you're not voting on these items. So for item, let's see, it would be, actually, now as I look at these, actually, each one of these now, let me just check one thing. Yeah, so actually, for each of these, you have conflicts on, we're actually are not going to be able to take action tonight, because there's only three of you, and that would only leave two votes, and since they're resolutions, it requires three affirmative votes. So just for the purposes now of the consent counter this evening, you can take action on all items on the consent calendar, but we have to take off and do a subsequent meeting, items 12, 13, 14, 15. Then on 16, Councilmember Tim had the, or Vice Mayor Tim had the conflict, so he's not here tonight, you can take action on that one. And then 17 is okay. So it'd just be items 12 through 15 we need to exclude, and the rest can be adopted by a motion.
And is there a motion to submit the consent calendar as amended by the city attorney? It's been moved by Councilman Bertone, second please, second by Councilman DeCarlo. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. The other items will come back. And we need to take some formal action now, because the council subcommittee did do interviews for the Fairfield Planning Commission. So thank you, Councilman Bertone, for being here, and would Michael Cohen and Sir William Wesley come forward, please, to be sworn in? And gentlemen, thank you very much for your choosing to spend some time planning Fairfield's future. Just delighted to have you here, so. And if you would turn and face the audience, please, so that your families can see you on television, and Madam Deputy Clerk, if you would, please.
Is it on? So you're going to repeat after me, and after I say aye, then you're going to state your name. Okay, so you're going to raise your right hand, please. Aye.
Aye.
Go ahead and state your name.
My name. I've got to leave him, I'll be here all night. William Wesley.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend.
...the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
...and the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California.
...against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
...that I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
...to the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
...and the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California.
...that I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
...without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation.
...or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion.
...and that I will well and faithfully...
That I will well and faithfully...
...discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
...upon which...
Upon which.
...I am about to enter. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And colleagues, we need to take one other action before we call this meeting to adjournment, and that is that we need to have a motion to continue items 12 through 16 to another regularly scheduled meeting.
It'll be actually items 12, 13, 14, and 15, and the motion would be to continue to the meeting of the June 20.
I will make that motion, but before I do, Mr. Mayor, I just want to thank our new planning commissioners who are joining our team. I'm looking forward to great work from both of our new commissioners. They have much promise and much talent, and I'm looking forward to them making a great contribution to this city. It was a tough set of interviews to just choose two planning commissioners out of all of the commissioners that we interviewed, but I'm confident that our recommendations and your ultimate choice is going to prove very successful for the city. We're looking for great things out of you two gentlemen, and I know that we'll see it. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. And now I'll make that motion.
So it's been moved to continue items 12 through 15 to another meeting, and is there a second, please? Seconded by Councilman DeCarlo. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We are adjourned until our next regularly scheduled meeting. Thank you.